This conference will now be recorded.
I'm going to call the regular council meeting Monday, November 18th to order.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Kane?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Mayor Protonnoa?
Here.
Councilmember Walchek?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let's see, approve agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Protonnoa?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
There any modifications to the agenda this evening? Approval of the minutes of regular and court session of November 4th, 2024. Any additions, changes, serve all standards printed. Public comment. Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda agenda items shall be allowed a maximum of five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please come to the podium, state your name and address. Online comments will be accepted after in-person comments are completed. All comments should be directed to the council and not to the audience. There is an exception tonight when we get to the zoning ordinance, we do have public comment on that section. So you can wait until then to speak. So if anyone has anything to say, please come forward.
Angie Skiba, 635 River Street. I think the concept of the new plan to build out on, excuse me, out north of town is a great idea. However, I think the day they first presented, I asked for a copy of the cost for each patron that would be purchasing, and I didn't get that for several weeks till they came back to the next meeting. I think at that point, that's when that needed to be presented to John Q. Public because I think the costs are very high. I have compared them with what they are using downstate. And I'm familiar with several of the buildings downstate and similar items we are not in Detroit. And I think some of those costs for each of the individual rooms and their purchasing is very high. And I don't think Alpena will accept that that cost rate. And I just think it should have been presented to the public. So the whole room could have been filled so everybody could have had their opinion. And I think that that still needs to be taken into consideration and presented to everyone. And I don't know if it has been posted or not because I keep looking for it and I haven't seen it. So I think everybody should know full well. Thank you.
If you'll allow me to make clarifications. So Angie, I believe is referring to the Gardens project and that public hearing is on December 2nd. So that will be the time at which you come back and you can specifically comment on that. I mean, of course, it's accepted now, but I just wanted to make sure that we knew that that was a different project. Thank you.
Did that get posted though when I had asked last time? I haven't seen it posted anywhere for the public to see.
The public hearing is posted.
I understand, but are those costs posted somewhere?
They are not.
No. But maybe please?
I will work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I'm closing public hearing. Consent agenda. I have one item.
This is unusual.
Yes, it is. Bills to be allowed in the amount of $634,789.58 and authorize Mayor Johnson and Clerk Slight to sign the warrant.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Protonnoa?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
We're down to eight presentations. Fire Chief Rob Edmonds is going to do a presentation with Captain Shuscheck staff and graduation admission.
Good evenings. The Eastern Michigan University School of Fire Staff and Command is a comprehensive program designed to prepare professional firefighters with the skills and knowledge to effectively lead and manage their fire agencies. Spanning 350 hours of competency-based education over 10 months, this program goes beyond traditional operational methods by encouraging conceptual thinking and innovative problem-solving approaches. It specifically targets fire officers who aspire to senior leadership roles within their departments, emphasizing the critical need to stay current with technological advancements and management strategies often found in private industry but overlooked in public service. This training ensures participants are prepared to face the evolving challenges of modern fire service leadership with confidence and capability. This program is now a department-required course for command staff at the captain level and above to ensure we are preparing a strong forward-focused approach to leadership strategies. On November 18th, Tyler Shuscheck successfully graduated from this program, making him the seventh command officer from our department to complete this prestigious and advanced course in fire service administration and leadership. There were 37 graduates in his class this year. It's my honor and privilege to formally recognize Tyler for his career accomplishment. Without the support from city council, city manager, his peers from the Alpine Fire Department, and most importantly, his family who had to manage life on weeks he was gone, this opportunity would not have been possible and contributed to his success. So I present to you Tyler Shuscheck.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We're down to announcements. Applications for upcoming council vacancies are being accepted through December 18th, 2024 at 4:00 p.m. And you can pick up the application in the clerk's office, or I do believe it's online. We have no proclamations and we're down to report of officers. A, Legacy Point Project, Rachel Smolinski, City Manager.
Thank you, everyone, and my comments will be very short because I am here to introduce Mr. Tommy Dalton, who can come on up. He is representing Infinity Ventures and is going to tell you a little bit more about the development that he is proposing. And you will also see in this packet, there is a purchase agreement for your consideration. So with that, Tommy?
Thank you, Rachel. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council members. As discussed, I'm Tommy Dalton. We are here talking about developing a piece of land that the city has owned for, I understand, about 20 years. And we're looking at doing housing. It's a combination of housing. All the details are out here, but I'm going to highlight some of the finer points. So we want to put in, over time, 236 rentals, which would be on the north side of the property. And we want to put in 100 townhouses that we will sell and 65 single-family homes. These will be built in conjunction with manufacturer by the name of Ritz-Craft. They are in southern Michigan. They're based in Jonesville, Michigan. So these will be built off-site and then placed here onsite in Alpena. We want to start the project next summer by laying the road infrastructure and utilities, placing the first homes the spring of the following year. Next year, though, we will place six of the single-family homes. The goal with the single-family homes is to show the community what they can purchase. They'll work then in conjunction with ABC Homes of Alpena so they can pick out the single-family home that they would like in this area, pick their lot, and then order their home. It will take about 12 to 16 weeks for their home to come in. Questions?
I don't have any.
I'm looking forward to it.
That's fantastic.
Awesome.
Are you done?
So I'm going to talk a little. We will be working in conjunction with the Gardens, which was already previously talked about on the south end. On US 23 itself, we have the intent to put a community center. That community center is based for the residents of the community. So indoor pool, a gym, some sports courts. The goal is to have a walking trail throughout the property. And we envision a gas station with a restaurant and a bakery right across from the industrial park. And so those are the things that we plan on doing. It is about a five-year total project. We're starting on the north end with rental properties. The goal is to get some properties, get them rented. We will then put the six up for sale, like we said, the single-family homes, really focused on being the model so we can bring in some more people that want homes in the city of Alpena, and we will expand from there. We're really going to be focused on the absorption rate, AKA how fast we can sell them or how fast we can rent them. So the rentals are four-plex structures so we can set one four-plex and have it livable within seven days from when it's first set. And so we'll set a series of those, watch the absorption rate, and continue down the path. We're not going to put in a bunch of homes overnight and wait for people to fill them up. This is an example of what the four-plex structure looks like. These have garages. We will have options with just carports and then options without garages focused on different price points to the community. I want to thank Lenny Avery and Mike Maher. They've been amazing. If Lenny and Mike didn't stay on top of me every week for the last 11 months, I don't know that it would have came here. So thank you to both of those gentlemen very much. I also want to thank everybody in the city of Alpena. It's been really great putting all the details together thus far, and I look forward to working with you. Seven days. So these are completely built off-site. Okay, to put that in perspective, the foundations are set. Everything's set. The home will be set by cranes. If we go through Ritz-Craft, they're set by cranes. All they have to do is connect power, connect water and sewer, and they're ready to live in. So when they come here, they're 95% ready to live in. They've got to finish some roofing, do a little bit of touches inside, finish the trim. But right now, it's taking them about seven days. The biggest projects that Ritz-Craft is doing right now are mainly based in Traverse City. They're doing, I don't know how many units, probably about 60 units a month in Traverse City right now with socks construction.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
You mentioned working with the Gardens.
Yes.
How do you envision that?
So the Gardens will be our access from the south. And so working with them on the roads, utility infrastructure, internet, water, sewer, those sorts of things.
Hemlock?
Off of Hemlock.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Tommy, this project is really exciting. And we look forward to our journey with you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
For council, we have a purchase. Has everyone read that? Any questions about it?
I can just point out a couple things, if I may.
And so this has been reviewed by Bill. So I told him if anything's wrong with it. It's not, just kidding. All right, so just a couple. So the purchase price is $10, and I wanted to point that out because that is kind of in exchange for the developer putting in all the roads and utilities and such. So you know, that's something that the city would not have the funding to do at this time. So without that, this development wouldn't happen. Also, we do plan to work with Target Alpena and the developer on a developer agreement. And so that will be in place prior to closing. And we'll be looking at closing no later than January 31st on this. There is also a reversion clause. If the development is not consistent with the agreement, then you know, that property can come back to the city. So those are the things I wanted to point out. I also did want to thank Mike and Lenny and Target Alpena for helping us get to this point. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes, especially with them, with the developer and with city staff. So thank you to all of them.
Okay, so on the purchase agreement, if no one has questions, and we'll talk about it. There's no motion in your packet, but the motion would be to accept the purchase agreement. And with me is being able to sign the purchase agreement. So if someone wants to make a motion, then we can discuss and go from there.
So I move that we accept the purchase agreement as presented and allow the mayor to sign. You say yourself, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Mike's first, Danny's second. Is there any discussion about the purchase agreement?
You can have my copy if it's not marked up.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Protonnoa?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I would just like to thank everyone who's been involved in this because it wouldn't happen without them. Thank you. Now we are down to the first reading of the zoning ordinance to repeal and replace. And I'm going to turn.
I'll be relatively brief unless you want me to read the whole 400 pages.
I say no.
This is the ordinance to repeal and replace the current zoning ordinance. This has been worked on for quite a while, I think my team would probably answer more more appropriate than I for as far as how long they've been working on it. It did go through planning commission last week. It's a council with planning commission. I'll get into some of the specific details as to some of the properties that were objected to. But it is set for public comment as well. So this is just first reading, so there'll be no action tonight. Just keep yourself acquainted with it, familiar with it. The second reading, on that second reading, depending upon council direction, so.
Okay. So I'm going to open up public comment on this. But I would, Montiel, if you could come up and just kind of give a brief recap of what happened at planning commission and the properties that were contested or?
Mm-hmm. Sure. So at the planning commission meeting last week, the planning commission essentially approved the entire zoning ordinance except for rezoning the DPI property from I-2, which is industrial, to waterfront district. So they did not, they took that portion out essentially. So there was also one other property, two addresses, one property owner and who's here tonight that is on the edge of the DDA expansion up Second Avenue. So the DDA expanded basically up to Clark Street. So as we took a look at that entire section, there was a combination of B-1 districts and OS-1 districts along that street. It was all changed to be central business district with the downtown overlay district with the exception of of those two properties that I mentioned. So they were OS-1. There is a single-family home on the property right now that has been used in some different capacities for some home business type uses. There, I think, was something in the past, maybe for some type of assisted living or something to that effect.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. And, but it's currently not being used in that manner. So the uses, after speaking with the property owner, the uses that are happening at that location can be used as it stands right now, just as a, either a home occupation or just a home, you know, a home office, actually, where a permit wouldn't even be required. So the planning commission opted to keep it or to have it be residentially zoned. It does face Clark Street and not Second Avenue because the use could continue. And it's not within that DDA district. Those were carved out. So that was the reasoning behind those specifically. As far as the DPI property is concerned, there were some questions asked during the meeting by the planning commission to DPI, which there was a lot of discussion. I think one of the reasons that they chose to not include that in the change was to get more public comment because there has not been a ton of public comment at all on that yet. So that's my perspective. Any other questions?
Yes. Obviously, I don't have the background on planning or zoning like some of the other members of our council do and have a little bit more education in that. But you know, I can understand, you know, when I look at the zoning and I know it was originally stated to put it from heavy industrial or to waterfront. See, for me, it's like I'm looking at that property and what it is. And I know that in the past, we've had blank canvases and we said, this is what we want it to become. No, but I could not, in my history, when I look back through to see if there were proposed changes to other properties, like for instance, we have, I believe, and I may have this totally wrong, Fletcher Paper.
Was it put into a PUD?
It was, okay, put into a PUD. That's, that's one of the things. But when I look at the property, you know, I have some concerns with changing it because it is an industrial area. I look at it and I see industrial. So, and I know that under, I've learned actually that under waterfront district, light industrial can be allowed within that property, but not what it is currently at, correct?
Can you repeat that question? Under waterfront district?
Waterfront district, it could be light industrial uses within that area. Or would it totally abandon that?
Well, the way that the zoning ordinance is structured right now is there's a waterfront district, an I-1 district and an I-2 district. So the I-2 district would be more of your heavier manufacturing type uses with more external effects that could impact the area around it. Whereas the light I-1 manufacturing category tends to be more of your lighter manufacturing, all internal, all internal without those exterior type effects of, you know, noise, potentially smell, things like that. Waterfront district is intended to have more of that connection to the waterfront with mixed use and commercial type uses. There's also some residential uses allowed in that, but primarily commercial in nature with that connection to public access to the waterfront. So certainly, they are different. There have been, across the state, definitely opportunities where industrial-type properties have been converted into public spaces and other type uses. Whether that is right for Alpena, I think that's what we need to, you know, talk more about.
There would be nothing that would preclude a future council if you say, we're going to leave it as is currently. And then somebody comes in, buys the property, takes everything down and changes it and changes it over to a waterfront district at that time.
Yeah, somebody could certainly purchase the property and then decide that they want to use it in a different capacity. And then we could have that conversation at that time to, you know, rezone it to something else, if that makes sense. We are also going to be going through a master planning process so that can be discussed at that time. I think the timing of this one is unique because it's going to auction in December so that you don't know who the purchaser is going to be. So it's hard to know at this point.
Montiel, what is the, I know I-2 is industrial designation. What is designation for waterfront?
Waterfront is WD waterfront district.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions too, because I'm concerned about the, as Mike was saying, I'm kind of going to mirror what he was saying, but add to it. The DPI is DPI there. So if somebody does purchase it, but it's now a light, if they can do it light industrial, then what type of manufacturing can even be used on a property? Isn't that going to deter somebody from purchasing that property? And isn't it, and Alpena citizens' best interest to see if somebody might purchase factory as it is, it's zoned the way it is, and then we can just do a planning commission, public comment notice, and then Alpena news all over again, as Mike was saying, if one that doesn't happen?
So for the current zoning, I-2, so these would be some of the uses that are different than I-1. So I just kind of called these out. From a specific manufacturing perspective, there are more for things like manufacturing or other commercial uses. But I-2 specifically would allow things like blast furnace, steel furnace, blooming or rolling mills, incineration of garbage or refuse, junkyard salvage yards, mines, quarries, gravel pits, petroleum products, gas products, paint and chemical bulk storage and distribution, smelting industries, whereas I-1 would not allow those types of uses. So you can see there's just a heavier exterior impact for I-2 than I-1. Did I answer all of your questions?
Sort of. Well, I guess I was under the impression that there were potentially three purchasers looking at DPI currently.
Well, I don't, I'm not aware of how many purchasers there are. I've spoken to three that had interest. I don't know where they are in the process of possibly buying it. The three that I spoke to, one of them aligned with waterfront district entirely. The other one, I'm not entirely sure exactly what would be there, but he was very thrilled that it was possibly going to be waterfront district. The other one had light manufacturing as part of his plan, but was, you know, willing to work with the city on incorporating the waterfront portion of it into waterfront district as well and kind of working with us on that plan. But again, I don't know where they are in the process. They might not be, you know, in the running. I have no idea. It's just the three that I happen to speak to. I haven't received calls from anyone other than those three.
And to follow up, and then this will be my last thing I say, I think. So I understand that, you know, the planning commission wants to get rezoning done. It's been working on it for a long time. How many months now?
So they want to approve the zoning ordinance. We've been working on it for about a year and a half. There are some cases coming up that would certainly benefit from some of the changes. Some of the changes came from just zoning variances that we have. I actually received an application for one today for a sign that this would help kind of with the process. So if possible, if the DPI property is, there's still a lot of question about that, my opinion and perspective would be, you know, to approve, you know, the zoning ordinance as we have it. And then if we need to go back and readdress the DPI property specifically, then we can do that. The way that your draft is presented is that the DPI property stays as I-2.
Yes. Okay. And I actually really, just as a comment, appreciate that because there were so many jobs lost after closing and not only direct jobs, but indirect jobs. And this community really was hurt by that. Not to the effect, I don't think, of Fletcher Paper Company, but the residual impact, I think, on their community is going to be more and more prominent as the years go by. And especially with these new housing developments coming in and everything, I think something that is important for Alpena to consider is despite anyone's opinion of potential smells or whatever that DPI produced, which is essentially just liquidating wood. It's like almost like making beer, wood, you know? I understand the smell is bad, but the jobs are really important. And I think keeping that structure, that area zoned in a way where it might incite somebody to come in and purchase it and restart another similar DPI factory, I think, would be really good for our area for jobs, so.
So I just have one question. Is this that you have coming forward that would benefit from us adopting the new ordinance? Is it detrimental to what they want to do or is it more hoops they have to jump through to get there?
It's just more hoops that they have to jump through, yeah. You know, there are, especially as there are more development that's happening, you know, whether it be facade grants or different things like that, which are ongoing with the DDA expansion. We just want to make sure that we're really clear on what that district is and, you know, how we proceed and that we're not like in this weird gray area of not knowing when the zoning ordinance is going to change. So I think that's why it would be nice to be able to move that forward.
Montiel, if, for example, there was a desire to break this up piecemeal and sell it and zone it for different things, waterfront, maybe the I-2 and the I-1, would that be a possibility?
I mean, anything is a possibility as far as, you know, looking at potential for rezoning. I think it would just depend on what the purchaser, you know, has in. I think it would just depend on what the purchaser, you know, has in mind and looking at it from a site plan perspective and uses and zoning ordinance requirements.
Yeah.
When it comes to public comment, I noticed that a lot of times, especially now, Facebook will get tons of comments, but then the people who are so, you know, brave to post things don't show up to these things. So at the planning commission meeting, you said that wasn't well attended by the public to provide public input?
There were a couple of people online, yeah, that made comment, a couple of people in person.
Is there anything that you can think of that can be done to broadcast this more so that we do receive?
Absolutely.
Above the city?
Yeah.
Our opinions aside, it doesn't, it's relevant. We are here to represent the citizens. And if the citizens aren't going to show up to tell us what they want, it's hard to make that decision.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, we could certainly put, you know, posts out there to request, you know, specifically request feedback. I mean, a zoning ordinance probably isn't something that most people are going to spend a lot of time reading. I understand that, I'm not offended. But, yeah. But on a topic, you know, that really impacts potentially a neighborhood, you know, it might be definitely beneficial to solicit that feedback directly. As we go through our master planning process, those are things that we'll be doing. We're doing that actually for a McCray Park visioning session that's going to be happening in December, so. Good question.
Oh, that's a great point. It's like, you know, the more public input and what we can get. Is it highly unusual to have something rezoned unless the property owner requests it?
Um, well, like for this zoning ordinance, the DDA expanded, so that's an example where it wasn't necessarily requested, but it was part of a larger strategy to expand the DDA. The onesie-twosie types of rezonings typically come from property owners that have a unique situation or development that they want to do. So I would say that's where the majority of them come from, unless it comes through, you know, a total master plan update or, you know, you have an opportunity where there's 90 acres in the city, which is, doesn't come up very often, obviously. Yeah.
And there is absolutely, just wanted to be clear that, you know, there's absolutely nothing, if this gets zoned this way with the draft as you present it, that later on, anyone can come back, you know, and, or the property owner or whomever, request the zoning to be changed within that if it sells to anyone else's.
Correct. It would be subject to approval, obviously, by the planning commission and city council, but they can absolutely request that.
I have nothing for them.
It's, if you go through the whole process again, just one specific area.
Correct.
Dan, do you have anything?
No. I listened to everybody else's questions. Not too much, I talked to Rachel about some of this this morning. My main concern is what goes on with DPI property. I figured it was best to wait on that until such times we know what it's going to possibly be sold for from there.
Okay. Anything else for us, Montiel? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If anyone would like to comment and speak to us, you may.
Okay, I mean, are we allowed to speak from online? Are we doing people in person first?
Let's, let's do, let's do people in person first and then I'll switch to online, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Daryl.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Daryl Clendenin and I'm the president of Decorative Panels International, what's left of Decorative Panels International. So after making paneling in eight different decades, we came to the conclusion that we can no longer sustain the facility. And it was a pretty sad day in February when we did what we did. And, you know, we did our best to take care of all the people that have worked so hard over the years. So in February, you know, we closed the plant and the plan is to sell the property. That is still the plan and a lot of work was done on the site to allow an industrial company to come back in, working hand in hand with Eagle, doing the necessary work and remediation on the site to make sure it's clean and safe for people. But again, that was done for a future industrial site. So it's true, I don't know, you know, there is an auction coming in. I don't know if it's going to be, what did you say, Montiel, L-2 or L-1 or?
I-2.
I can, yeah, I have no idea. But, but I don't know. But, you know, some of the comments that were made, you know, could somebody come in and want to do I-1 or I-2 or a combination of both or part I-2 and then part of the property as waterfront? And it's good to know that the city, and I know you would, do what's best for the city as I want to do what's best for the city, you know, is to create jobs. And maybe there is a combination space, you know, I don't know. But right now, I've got industrial buyers, you know, looking at the site that are nervous, you know, about a rezoning and will probably, and chances are, pull out. There are some people, and I, Montiel had mentioned some folks, they really haven't engaged to a high degree. I think one dropped out. But we'll talk to anybody, you know, if somebody wants to buy that site, great. But right now, it's being marketed as an industrial site. All the work that's been performed in conjunction with Eagle has been for an industrial site. So the planning commission, you know, decided to, you know, remove DPI and we appreciate it. And I would just respectfully ask that you maintain that. Let us, you know, sell the property and whoever buys it will certainly work with all of you to hopefully create jobs and, you know, make it a clean, safe environment. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I have a question. Daryl, 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 may I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Would it, would it hurt a purchaser to have both the industrial designation as well as a waterfront?
Would it hurt them? It all depends because...
Hurt you and market it that way.
Because, you know, you know, if somebody wants to come in and utilize all 90 acres and provide 400 jobs for Alpena, it could, you know, right? I mean, they could also want to, you know, make something quietly with, you know, no odor or anything and have part of the site for something else. I don't know. All I know is we're less than a month away from an auction and I've got some really nervous people. And, you know, we, we're landowners, you know, and we're an industrial zone and we'd like to, you know, keep it that way. And then you guys work with, you know, whoever buys the property. But, you know, to create jobs, I think is really, really important, you know, for this community.
Daryl, can I ask a question? No, but I, it's, I can't recall off the top of my head. When does your auction start?
December 18th, and I should know that, but I'll, I'll, I'll come back to you and give you the date, but it's rich right around there, 16th or 18th. If you want to buy it, you can, I'll get you to that. Well, it has to be more than that.
$10.
No, I make a motion that it's not $10. I can't even do that.
So, so I appreciate that and I appreciate your comments. And I just would like to say that I have appreciated a relationship since I closed. Sometimes we agreed from the beginning what's going on and sometimes we didn't.
Yeah, that's right.
But since then, we've had a great relationship. We've had monthly meetings most of the time, sometimes more if we needed them.
Yeah.
Do believe that your best interest is for the city of Alpena and I appreciate that. And that being said, I think that Alpena has to decide what's best for them to...
Sure, absolutely. And I, and I appreciate your transparency and Rachel's and everybody I've worked with. And I've been ultra transparent, the only way I know how to be. So we just want to do what's right for the city of Alpena. That's all.
Thank you.
And reach out. I'll answer any questions. Feel free to ask me.
Evening, how are you? My name is Scott Dinas. I'm an attorney at Barnes and Thornburg in Grand Rapids and I represent DPI. I spoke, excuse me, in front of your planning commission as well. And I just have a couple of comments that I'd like to make. And then, of course, if you have questions, you're welcome to ask me as also. The, and I circulated a letter, which I understand you folks got. Sorry about the timing, but we didn't have a lot of time either. So that letter goes through the practical zoning issues that you're facing with this. You absolutely have the power to rezone property, but the state law has a process that you really should be following and you're not following it right now. Your comprehensive plan should be in place, then your zoning ordinance should follow that comprehensive plan, not vice versa, which is what's being proposed right now. So there's a number of objections that we would make based on that anomaly and those are based in the letter. And I, I won't go through those now and take more time. I will leave you with this. Several of your questions kind of point in the same direction. Imagine if the city rezoned the property where your house is located right now and you were in the process of marketing your house for sale. What would that do to the value of your property if they were going to completely preclude your property from being used as a residential property and now a different use for a buyer that, a completely different type of buyer that you've been marketing? And now you've got to go find somebody else to fit that mold. In answer to your question, would it hurt if, if we had multi-zones? I think what, what I would typically expect the community to do, and by the way, I'm a municipal lawyer, I'm usually on that side or sitting behind a small desk like that. I, I would expect that the zoning would be left in place and the, ultimately, the city could communicate to potential buyers that they're, you folks are receptive to any number of different types of uses on the property. But to change the zoning kind of midstream like this does polarize the market and it is causing real problems for us right now. And we very much encourage you to remove that property from your rezoning. I wouldn't tell your planner that you're not going to move forward on her year and a half of work. So I think it's appropriate to move forward with your first reading on the zoning ordinance. But just like you did, just like your planning commission did, just remove those properties that you want to remove and proceed without it. We're happy to engage in a process. If you folks want engagement from the company, we're happy to engage and look at alternatives on the property. But at least for the time being, we're very much committed to selling the property as is. Do you have any questions? I'm happy to answer. Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did you have a question, sir?
Well, I'm kind of thinking that that's what we did already. Since the DPI spot is staying as industrial for now.
Right, that's what the planning commission is recommending, yes.
That's recently, the ordinance changed it and have it under a perspective. So it is, it is staying for this time as, as I-2.
Yes, that's what your planning commission recommended, but it was proposed to the planning commission to change it to waterfront.
And then it was changed.
By the planning commission, last time I was here, yes. Perfect. So just do what they did and...
Yeah.
And told us that the planning commission wanted more public input is why they moved it on the way it was.
Well, it wasn't up to us until they sit there and said, well, we're the other anyway. I mean, they have to pass it first before we, I think, so I just...
We're ratifying.
While we had...
We ratify.
Or we're ratifying what they did, that's it. Yeah.
And this will be the second reading, so.
This is the first reading.
At the second reading, we would...
Oh, yeah, and we can talk and discuss and changes. We can even put on another public comment on second reading if we want. We could, there's many things that we can do. We can make, we can make it take effect farther down the road. It doesn't have to take effect when we do the reading. So there's lots of things to consider and then that's for a week. Yeah.
Great. Thank you all.
Good evening and thank you for hearing me. I own the property at 108 West Clark Street. I also own 719, which faces on Second Avenue, the business district. I purchased that property in 1981 as OS-1. Didn't know whether I was going to use it as that or not, but for approximately 35 years, I've run McConnell Computer Service out of my home. Been pretty good with the neighbors. None of the neighbors have given me any trouble. I haven't given them any trouble. My wife also does some bookkeeping out of there. Originally, when we bought it, she was studying to, studying accounting. She did not go into the accounting business other than for her own business, which is McConnell Incorporated, which is also does its business, business address out of that home. I respectfully would ask that you do not change my zoning to residential 2. I don't necessarily have to have OS-1, although since I've had it for 43 years as OS-1, if it's not broke, don't fix it, would be my opinion. And I realize everybody's got an opinion. That's mine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's 108 Clark and then 719 Second Avenue. So the 719 Second Avenue would be in the DDA expansion, correct? No, it's not. Because Clark is...
So there's, there's two addresses there. The, the house that they live in faces Clark and then there's a portion of that that faces Second, but it is two different addresses, but it's one large zoning lot, if you will, because it's owned by one, one person. That portion was carved out of the DDA expansion. It's not in there.
Okay.
It's directly across from the Salvation Army building.
If I may, I have always treated that as one property. I have not looked at this two separate properties. It was a condition of purchasing that property, that, that 719 lot, I would not have bought 108 West Clark if I couldn't have got 719.
There it is.
Which was an owner in Arizona at the time. So that's how that property came together. We've left it as two separate parcels, but we've used it as one.
Montiel, refresh my memory. And planning commission moved that forward with the change or without the change?
They moved forward with having it be R-2.
That doesn't affect the use, what he currently does in his home?
Correct.
Is that because he's grandfathered in?
Yes, and, and because the way that he's using it with operating his basically home business, you know, out of a home, we have provisions for that in the zoning ordinance. And what his is, as he described it to me, is really just a home office.
Don't mean to talk about you in the third person.
Maybe look at it as a home office, but I have developed software and supported a number of businesses in this area and while it's not as active as it used to be, I still maintain that I will provide service to these people if they request it. So I have delivered software to a number of entities in this county.
Okay. So Montiel, I just want to make sure I understand this. So the planning commission has passed for the, the changes to the zoning ordinance would change this, this citizen's properties from OS-1 to R-2.
Correct.
But by that change, it does not impact his ability to continue using his properties as he has been since 1981?
Correct.
Okay.
Any more questions for Montiel?
No, same question I had.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else in, in person who wants to make comments? No?
Is there someone online?
I think it's Bryce.
Okay, Bryce?
Yes.
Okay, you're up.
Can you state your name?
Can you state your name and address?
Yeah, my name is Bryce Sims, 134 East Oldfield Street. I'm on the corner of Ford and Oldfield. I've owned the house for approximately five years. So I have a lot of things to say and quite a few things that I have to add from other people that have spoken. So start out with the attorney. Originally, the planning commission had this drafted to be changed to waterfront. I believe the attorney was brought in to strong arm the planning commission to change their mind. They argued that we didn't have a comprehensive plan in place, but at the time of the last comprehensive plan, this was still an operating facility. So why would it have been in the plan to be changed? So I would argue that there's been quite a substantial change in circumstance... been quite a substantial change in circumstance since the factory has closed. And furthermore, Darrell or his attorney will not disclose who these potential buyers are. So if it stays I2, who's to say these potential buyers aren't going to be a forge of some sort where there's going to be lots of smoke, lots of pollutants, right here on the shores of Thunder Bay, right next to our beautiful downtown? I am completely opposed to I2. I believe we have a unique opportunity to have our shoreline back. They argue jobs, well, anything could create jobs there. Demolishing that plant and putting something potentially very nice could create a lot of jobs in the process. Yeah, and then if they sell it the way it is as I2, there's the concern of potential grandfathering. So if someone else were to buy it as I2 as it stands, and we say we don't want their facility here, they've already bought the property as I2, that's much harder to accomplish. I've checked within the square mile of DPI's property. There is 957 properties within one square mile of DPI. We'll say approximately each property pays $1,000 per year in property tax. I'm sure some are more, but for the sake of quick math, that's nearly $1 million a year in property taxes, city. I believe the 957 lots directly within one square mile of this facility that could be potentially anything have the right to have some say. I've lived here for five years. I bought the house with the knowledge there was a plant here. It is what it is. I lived here as what I could afford at the time. I went outside in summer days when there was a northeast wind coming across the lake, and I could watch sawdust falling, like literally on my lap. My kids are outside playing, breathing that in. Sawdust might not be that bad, but who's to say what's going to go there next? So... Alpena's been here longer than DPI. We have 88 acres of waterfront that has the potential to become part of a new prime downtown area reminiscent of its former glory. However, in recent years, DPI has faced lawsuits and negatively impacted the value of homes owned by taxpaying citizens. The smell hazardous materials flying from the stacks, constant noise, and the unattractiveness of the building itself have contributed to this negative effect. In addition to the potential for economic and urban development, rezoning DPI to the waterfront would address the concerns of the community regarding the negative impact of the factory. The unpleasant smell hazardous materials and noise have not only affected the quality of life for residents, but have a detrimental effect on property values. By rezoning DPI, the community can look forward to cleaner air, a safer environment, and the restoration of their property values if it is now zoned waterfront. Rezoning DPI from I2 to waterfront presents a unique opportunity to revitalize the downtown area and improve the quality of life for residents. Over 900 properties that sit on the Alpena's north side, by embracing this change, Alpena can build on its rich maritime history and vibrant community while also attracting tourism that we welcome without heavy industry in our backyard. Since DPI's departure, not only has my personal property value increased, but also the value of other homeowners in the area, we now have the pleasure of hearing the birds chirping and children happily playing outside. Gone are the days when dust particles would rain down on my home and vehicles, causing inconvenience. I remember watching sawdust falling on our lap and while our five young children played outside. The steam and smell outside were so thick during northeast winds that even breathing was difficult at times. So in closing, I respectfully urge you to reconsider and reintroduce what the planning commission had originally drafted, and that is to change the DPI property from I2 to waterfront development in the proposed new zoning ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else online who'd like to speak? That being said, I'll close on public comment on the first reading of the zoning ordinance. So we will bring this back at our next meeting. We will add another public hearing at that time, see if anyone else has anything to say, and we'll try to get the word out, and then go from there.
Public comment?
Yeah, sorry. Okay, so we have council committee reports.
The main thing I got is, if you go down Bedford Street off of, off of Fourth there by Ella White School, you have three beautifully empty lots there that you frequently had, used to have, got to get out there yet, future had, old falling down houses. Thankfully, the displaced skunks did not come to my house, so that's a good thing. So I'm looking forward to the next phase of that, and I'll let you know when we find out about it.
That's it?
That's it.
Something to report?
I do have something. I feel like sometimes when I'm reporting on committees, I'm on the witness protection program or something. So I have several that they're confidential and we can't report, but here today, the Committee for the Snowplow Naming Committee met, and we were able to narrow our list of snowplow names down to about 15. Those are online currently, as I'm told. And so I encourage everyone to go out and vote, and let's get a name on the snowplow. It's, the new one is kind of sitting out here. There's a lot more bells and whistles. It was nice to see the excitement in the DPI Director Shannon's face with all the new bells and whistles that this is going to offer for all of our people that are working in the snows, keeping us safe in the winter. So, gosh, it's nice to report something.
I was kind of hoping that the new truck would have these little guys that run out after they plugged up your driveway, you know?
They're going to hire you to do it.
I'm sure.
I do. There were several blue ribbon cutting ceremonies this week. Edward Jones and Eric Ferguson Financial Advising, which is out on our new road, Hemlock Lane. It's beautiful out there. Compassus Hospice, Old Mill Coffee House, and Lady of the Lake Yoga. I also attended the Sanctuary Advising Council. So many great things are happening there. They are conducting an assessment of values. They're going to try to find out qualitatively how people feel about the water and how they use the waterfront and so on, which I thought that's so great. They're having a film festival, ROV championship, and they've said that there'll be 26 Viking cruise ships coming in, and they're going to try to get more. Found this, just this one last thing. There is a group of men called Force Blue. They're special forces veterans, and they're just divers who want to visit all the sanctuary sites. So that was really interesting. And of all the things they did, I gather, they brought in some buoys and did some other things, but they picked Alpena to come back and do their training. So that was, yay, yay, Alpena. But a lot of good things going on. And that's it for me.
Okay, I'll just give a quick update. Recycling, we hired a new executive director. Maybe we can get him here one day and you can meet him. Rachel and I are extremely excited.
He just started today.
And we have him in meetings this morning. So we have high hopes, high hopes for him. And recycling, we continue to work toward our new facility and working toward our funding gap. And we have hopefully some good things on the horizon for that, that I'll come back and report once we get that done. We did have a retirement board meeting this week. We had a good quarter for the retirement fund. It's doing well. It's stable. We're hoping it continues to do that. HHS, because I'm on HHS too, our yearly newsletter will be going out probably in December, so look for that. Lots of animals in need right now, so if you want to volunteer or donate time, money, supplies, HHS is always happy to receive them. Anyway, that's what I have.
Is the new executive director, his name was, is it Public or?
Yeah, Bailey Bar.
Bailey Bar.
Bailey Bar.
Look at Carol. She must know him.
Yeah.
Bailey. It's a small town. Oh, that's funny.
We're excited. We think that he will do a wonderful job for us.
His wife's name is Bailey, too.
His wife's name is Bailey.
Bailey and Bailey's all through high school.
So, yeah, so that's exciting. So we have nothing, we're down to new business. Kathy Hines, our Human Resource Director, is going to address us on medical insurance.
I told you it's already live. This is the most exciting part.
I'm Kathy. I'm the Human Resources Director here. And I started reading my memo today, and then I started making a whole bunch of more notes. So I bet you guys are super excited. So I want to back this up, because my memo starts, says that in early October is kind of when we started this, and we didn't. We actually started in August, and Hub came here. That was our agent, or it's still our agent, and they asked what we budgeted, and they gave me the sad puppy dog eyes and said, oh, well, we think you're going to have an increase of about 28%. And I gasped and went back and cried to Anna and said, oh, my gosh, what are we going to do if that's what it comes in at? So when they came and they told us it was actually only 23%, they were kind of happy, thinking, oh, well, we brought it down from 28 to 23, and you should be super happy about that. And of course, I said, that can't possibly happen. So they came up with some alternate options for us. But when we started looking at those alternate options, we were still over budget, and they did bring it down to about 15%. However, sadly, that 15% was still detrimental, I should say, not still, more detrimental to the employees. They would have so much more out of pocket if they actually had to use the insurance. And we sat down and we talked because the union contracts dictate that we have to talk to the representatives when we think we need to make a change. So they said, hey, will you do us a favor? And will you go out and talk to Mesa, which is the Michigan Education Special Services Association, and see if you can give a quote, because they now work with all governmental agencies? And I said, heck, yeah, why not? So we did, and it has taken a very long time. But we finally got a quote back, and we did it several different ways, so it took a long time. But they will only do pre-65, which is completely fine with us, because we do Medicare Advantage for our post-65 retirees. So that worked out without a problem. I provided to them the retiree census, and then Blue Cross Blue Shield gave to them what our claims history was for five years. That's what they need to see in order for their underwriters to actually give a good, solid quote. And at first glance, we weren't quite sure. We thought, man, this is kind of high. We currently offer two plans. One is $1,500 or $3,000 if you're a family plan. And that is a more traditional plan, but it has a relatively high premium. And that was going up to the 23%. And if we kept that plan, they wanted to increase that to a 20% copay for any services you have. So you'd be paying more for your premium, your cost share, and then you'd be paying 30% every single time you went to the doctor, you had a surgery, you went to orthopedic for whatever, you get the point. And then the other plan is a 3,200 plan or a 64 if you're a family or a two-person. And the city did contribute to your HSA, because it's a high deductible plan. But we were only contributing about 45% of that, and then the employees had to contribute the rest of that. And we weren't sure if we were even going to be able to contribute that much because the premium dollars were going to go up so much more. So can we contribute? Can't we contribute? Do we need to decrease that? What do we need to do? So with Mesa, they offered us three plans, and we have to offer all three plans and dental and vision to get a 1% discount. And so even though it's only a 1%, that's not a lot, but in the end, when you have 80 employees and about 60 of them take our insurance, the 1% does help us over time. One of which is considered a super rich benefit. And I said to the guy, I'm like, what if nobody takes that plan? Because I just, it's such a high premium, and the cost share is going to be high? He said, we don't care. You have to offer it, but we don't care. Okay, fair enough. So then the other two plans, when you look at what our, our new cost share would be and what Mesa would be, there's only like a few dollars difference. But here's the beauty of it. Mesa actually is Blue Cross Blue Shield, so it's no longer an HMO. Does everybody know what HMO means? Every single time you need literally anything done, you have to have a referral. And it doesn't matter if you go to a specialist that you've been seeing since you've been five years old. Every year, you have to start back at your doctor, and you have to go to this, get a referral, and get a referral, and get a referral. So there, it's not just the step therapy process, it's a referral process that I have people coming in my office crying. I've sat in my back office crying because of having to jump through those hoops. I just had a situation not too long ago that I thought, honest to God, I've been diabetic since 25, for 25 years, because this is a couple, couple of years ago, and yet I'm jumping through hoops trying to prove to these people I'm diabetic. And it was Blue Cross. I said, can you just look at my records? You can see, you've been giving me insulin for years. Anyway, so it is a very cumbersome process, and it's not always easy, and we've had a lot of difficulty with that. Mesa's not an HMO. It's just a traditional Blue Cross Blue Shield. If you've had that relationship with a doctor since you've been five years old, you can continue with that. You can go with your annual appointment, and you don't have to have that referral process anymore. Also, we go from a $3,300, $6,600 deductible to a, two different ones. One is a $1,650, $3,300 deductible or a $2,000, $4,000 deductible, so much different. So you're meeting your deductibles so much quicker than you would with the other one. And on the one that they offered us, the Hub International, the one we have right now, your max out-of-pocket is $13,000. So then, if you then have to do your copays, and then after you, you know, you hit your deductible and you're still meeting your copays, it takes a lot of copays then to hit your $13,000. We're going to put our employees in the poorhouse, and not intentionally, just because that's insurance nowadays. So overall, we're offering them a much better plan, even though they are paying more with the cost share. But I didn't bring that sheet because I literally have a stack like this, but I could have brought you a sheet that shows you if they use their insurance, paying a little bit more with a Blue Cross Blue Shield plan versus paying the HMO plan. They're paying more with that plan with a lower cost share than they would with the lower deductible. And I'm probably talking in circles, because I've talked this to death, literally, that I've gone in Rachel's office, and I'm like, I'm having a heart attack today. I think you need to call the ambulance. I don't feel well. It's been very cumbersome. It's been, it's been tough. But in the end, I feel like this is absolutely the best plan for our employees. Hopefully, it's not a one-year fix. Hopefully, we can stay on a trend of offering quality insurance like they really truly deserve. Let me think. There's so many thoughts going through my mind. We would still deposit into their HSA, but we would give them half. Instead of 45%, we would actually give them half of their deductible. So a little bit more. So if they pick the 2,000 plan, we would give them 1,000, or it's 2,000, 4,000, we would give them 2,000 for their family. So a little bit better there. Some people say, well, I never use it. Well, then save it and invest it, and now you have a retirement nest egg. So that's good for them. Let's see here. I think I've said enough without going into super deep detail with you. So the health insurance increase was approximately $83,000. By deducting how much we give them to their HSA, though, we could save about $37,000, and this is over a year period of time. And then by bundling everything together, so having the Delta Dental and the Blue Cross Blue Shield Vision on there, we could save another $3,000. So instead of having an increase of $79,000, we brought it down for a year's period of time of about $43,000. $43,000 with the savings. And yes, we are passing more on to the employee, but we would have regardless of what plan we picked, unfortunately. So the city did save money, but the employees are just getting a much, much better insurance plan. So your memo says attached, you have a budget agreement. And I went on vacation on Friday and we decided at the 19th hour that until we figure out exactly where every single employee would go, we're not going to bring you that budget agreement because we'd have to shimmy it again because we're not sure how everybody's going to land. Some people may opt out because of a little bit higher cost and cost share. And some people may say, hey, this, because the insurance is so great, I'll go with a little bit lower deductible. So that will come to you in the near future. In the meantime, I'll answer questions first. Yes.
Yeah.
Because at ACC, we had an HSA, but we had an amount, a maximum amount that we could put into our HSA.
There's still the IRS codes that we have to abide by. And so what happens is I let all the employees know what that max is per IRS every year. And then some people will say, okay, then I can contribute so much and the city will contribute so much and they'll hit that max. But when Jennifer does payroll, she also gets a report from Health Equity. That's the bank we use. She gets reports from them saying, warning, warning, somebody's getting close. So then we contact them and we try to make adjustments if we need to. Or we tell them to contact their bookkeeper to help them through that process.
Just to piggyback on what you said about the HSA, and I'm retired now, and that health savings account is absolutely wonderful to anybody who has anything bad to say about
it. For sure. Well, and you know, us actually decreasing, just to be completely transparent, decreasing how much we put into the HSA and switching plans, that was one of the things that people did bring up that they didn't like because some people used it completely as their savings. And I understand that. But those were people that probably weren't using their insurance. And trust me, if you use your insurance, like some of us have, you, the lower deductible is an absolute godsend for you. And we never know when we're going to walk outside and trip and break our leg, or we're going to have something happen inside that we had no idea was happening in our body. So I always try to remind people of those little things of how important insurance is when you least expect it.
And you can use your HSA to meet that deductible.
Yeah. Well, and some people too, that remind them, you can use them for glasses and your kids' braces and, you know, all of those. I think you get a tunnel vision that you can only use it for your medical insurance. And there's so many more things you can use them for. Yeah. Anybody else?
I have no question.
Are you sure? Because I have so much to tell you. We could sit here for so long and what they have to say doesn't even matter.
Once the offers from three other people.
I got a question.
Yes.
So is dental, would that be part of the standard plan?
Yeah, it actually is all bundled together, but it's still Delta Dental. It's still what you have right now. It's just that it's bundled through Mesa. Yeah.
I think that was very brief, but thorough.
Shoot.
I just wanted to commend Kathy for all the work she's put into this because she really has looked at every single angle that she can think of. And we've had lots and lots of tough conversations and
We have.
worry and trying to get the best to our employees and balance that out with costs of the city, too.
Thank you.
And there's been a lot of changes through Blue Cross Blue Shield that have not been popular. And once we roll those out to all the employees, they're not going to be. One thing that actually really dinged us when we looked at claims history was a couple drugs that are drugs that we use for our everyday care for some arthritis drugs that now all of a sudden they're like, hey, we're not covering that anymore.
Tier three.
I'm like, oh, no, I need to get that word to our retirees and staff members. And it's hard when all of a sudden they tell you, you can't be on something anymore, that your pharmacy is acting as your doctor now. So it's sad. But nonetheless, okay. So my recommended motion is to approve the transition of the city's health and vision insurance. So health and vision includes a dental, so you know that's part of the package, from Hub International to Mesa Health Dental and Vision Plan effective January 1, 2025.
Ready for the motion?
Yeah.
I guess I'm
Ask.
I don't know. I move that we approve the transition of the city's health and vision insurance from Hub International to Mesa's Health Dental and Vision Plan.
Was I supposed to say that?
Good, I'm coming. Yeah. And I don't know why. It says effective and I have it cut off at that point.
It's effective January 1.
Okay, January 1, 2025.
Second.
So we have a motion. And second, is there any discussion? Okay.
Mayor Proton Noak?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Thank you Kathy for all of your heart.
Thank you so much.
We have Chief Edmonds with the ambulance fee schedule briefing.
Good evening again. In discussing our ambulance fee schedule with our contracted EMS billing provider, Mobile Health Resources, it was suggested that we review and update our current fee schedule for the ambulance services we provide to remain current with allowable and approved fees. The new approved rates were just approved, just provided to us at the end of October due to a new revision timeline by Blue Cross Blue Shield and Center for Medicaid and Medicare Services. In the past, this adjustment has been requested to coincide with the city's fiscal year as the newly published approved rates were not available until the new calendar year. Third-party insurers like Medicare, Medicaid, and Blue Cross establish allowable fees for ambulance services and publish those revisions annually as they change. By not adjusting our rates and underbilling, we're essentially using tax money to subsidize commercial insurers' profits and leaves us with less revenue to operate from. Any allowable increase assists in our long-term sustainability to provide key essential EMS services to the community for the future. Based on the annual revisions to allowable fees, I'm recommending the following ambulance rate increases for approval effective January 1, 2025. And I do have those listed with the percent of change as well. Our inter-local ambulance agreement with Alpena County requires that we secure Alpena County's approval to raise ambulance fees by more than 5%. As none of these rate increases exceed the 5% allowable, I don't need to present the fee schedule to the full Board of Alpena County Commissioners for their approval before the effective implementation date. I did approach the Courts and Public Safety Committee today notifying them that these were the changes we were looking to do effective January 1. They had a few questions, but they did provide a motion to file it because everything is below the 5% increases. So with that, I do have a recommended motion and I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
We approve the 2025 ambulance fee schedule as proposed to be effective January 1, 2025.
One second. Any discussion? Anna.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
And Mayor Proton Noak?
Aye.
Ocean Carey.
Thank you.
Now we have city engineers and water production plant intake cleaning and repairs.
All right. In November of 2023, the city of Alpena contracted with Michael's Construction to inspect and if possible, correct the intake issues that we were experiencing. Using a diver, the crew from Michael's was able to discover that the existing chemical feed line used to prevent zebra mussels from obstructing the intake pipe had somehow detached and plugged the exterior intake. The crew from Michael's was able to successfully remove the obstruction during the allotted time and budget. Additionally, they were able to inspect sections of the intake and provide the city with substantial amount of information on the condition of the intake line. Basically, the report said that we needed to clean the intake line and obviously reinstall these, the chemical feed lines. I won't, I'll spare you the, some of these details. We did have two additional alternate prices for some, for some additional work. And while we feel they're worthy of consideration, they don't address the immediate emergent needs of the proposed project or the allowable budget at this point. Instead, my recommendation would be to not award either alternate and program adequate budget to complete both alternates as a future intake project. So you'll see that as a CIP item coming up. Meridian has completed several projects in the past for us. Additionally, they have indicated that Michael's Construction will be their subcontractor on this project. Both contractors have a firm understanding of the scope of work and are believed to be capable of completing the project. Adequate funding is available for the project to be completed between what has been budgeted and fund balance transfers. And you see the recommended motion there.
Does anyone have questions? Of Steve?
Just a quick comment. I really do appreciate the two bids, as I always do, you know. But the other 14 firms, did we get any feedback from them at all, Steve, on, on, and why we weren't seeing more bids at this time?
Everybody is out of town for this project. Except for Michael's, they were able to get with, with a local bidder. But most everybody knows that Michael's was already here in the past summer. They have, you know, all the, all the information on this already. I think that's probably where, where some of them fell off. We did, I did take calls from probably seven different ones that had some interest, but I think they just couldn't touch having some of the local, the local help here. So.
No other questions?
Okay. I have no questions, Steve. Thank you.
I move that we accept a proposal from Meridian Contracting Incorporated and enter into a contract-based bid of $449,990.
Second. We have a motion. And second, any discussion?
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Noak?
Aye.
And Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Is still with us. And we have raw influence pump replacements.
Yes, we said influence in the memo, which they are influence pumps, but the, the agenda inadvertently said affluent. So, yeah. You can't have affluent without influence. So in December, staff requested and was granted permission to purchase three new raw water, raw influence pumps. Due to their age and condition, three, these three pumps need repair or replacement. And this is part of an ongoing systematic replacement of our aging pumps throughout the plant. In December, with council's permission to waive the purchasing policy requirement for sealed bids, we solicited quotes to replace these pumps. During the solicitation, Kerr Pump informed the city that they are the sole franchise provider of this particular pump, and any pump would require replumbing and replacement of the motors and controller. For this reason, it would be most, more cost-effective to replace in kind. However, just prior to ordering these pumps, Violia staff did some due diligence research on the pumps and discovered that these pumps would no longer work in their current configuration. So the purchase order with the company was canceled. And at that time, staff began to look for better options. Additional companies were contacted and prices solicited for the replacement options with the knowledge that the pumps would no longer be a plug-and-play replacement. After reviewing the different options, Violia staff, with our concurrence, recommend utilizing the attached estimate and plan from H D S S LLC of Alpena. They propose, instead of the original plan to replace three pumps, we instead place, replace two pumps and their motors. The motors in these pumps are also in need of replacement soon. So performing both upgrades at one time will allow for the reconfiguration and connection of plumbing. Their proposal includes the price for this plumbing reconfiguration. And you see the recommended motion at the bottom.
And I just, I just have one question because our original motion was for three pumps. What happened to the third pump?
Oh, the third pump will still be there. And it's, I mean, it's working. We'd like to replace it, but this just made more sense right now for the configuration that's going on. We would need to replace those motors at some point in the future, too. So this just kind of made more sense right now. And, and the budget allowed for two motors and two pumps. And that will certainly get us through with that third one kind of being on the horizon. Yeah.
And this still falls within what we approved in December of 2023, where we said these particular items are more of a purchase order item than to a sealed bid, just based on the type of machinery that we're purchasing and so on.
Exactly.
Okay.
Right.
I just want to be clear and remind the public of what we passed, just to kind of, you know, sure that we're still doing what we said we were going to do. We just changed configurations that end our companies to look forward.
Correct. That is true. Yep.
Does anyone have questions?
No.
Entertainer motion?
I move that we issue a purchase order to H D S S LLC of Alpena, Michigan for two replacement pumps and motors in the amount totaling $87,027.20.
Second.
We have a motion. And second, any discussion?
Thank you.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Noak?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Ocean Carey.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn to closed session to, A, discuss city manager periodic performance evaluation as requested by the city manager, and B, discuss water and sewer litigation update. Someday, I'm not going to have to say that, sorry.
Yeah. Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes. That's getting that word out, okay.
Mayor Proton Noak?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
This conference will now be recorded.
We weren't, you know.
Not that.
We have no further business before city council?
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you. We adjourn.
Second.
Third.
Not the second.
Thank you.